I'm going to open the Awoka Select Board meeting of August 20th, 2025. That's what it is. Do we have any adjustments to the agenda tonight? Can you now take a motion to approve the minutes of August 6th?
I'll make that motion.
In a second. Do we have any further discussion on those minutes?
Can I have a second?
additions, corrections, deletions? Can I have them in? All those in favor?
Aye.
Close? So carry. One minute from the community. I am here now. We'll move on to correspondence then. We have two pieces of correspondence that are asking for signatures. One is the solar array and battery installation contract with Solar Mountain. Solar LLC, they were selected to begin work on. They're going to do the solar work. The battery. So I will just pass that around. Select Board signatures, and it looks like there's two pieces that need to be signed up. We also have a letter from Polo and Polo Attorneys, our firm attorney. There are easement deeds for town signing up for the wastewater. First of all, we are going to need to adopt a resolution. What's authorized is me to sign the easement. Says, "Try to invoke municipal resolution. Linda Martin, select board member, duly authorized agent of the town of Awoka. Certified by the following as a true copy of a resolution adopted by unanimous consent as a select board of the town of Awoka. It states that the resolution is still in full force and effect. Resolves that Linda Martin, a select board member and duly authorized agent of the town of Awoka, is authorized to transact all business and execute all documents pertaining to the easement to the town of Awoka to connect with respective municipal sewer system for the following properties. It would be the town office, Brero Depot, and historic schoolhouse, which is one property. It would be the town garage and fire station, another property. And it would be the town hall property." So I would need a motion to approve this resolution. Second.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second it.
Okay. Do we have any further discussion on the resolution? All those in favor?
Aye.
Close? Okay. Is this just a notice that we gave a catering permit? So we're just notified that Mill River Brewing LLC will be holding a a catering permit to work at Sandywood Farm Salvation Farm fundraiser event on Saturday. Have the July's Sheriff's Department monthly report, which I will pass over for review. There is notice of upcoming DLT Town Fair. I think this year it's going to be at the DoubleTree by Hillman South Burlington. It's one or two days with lots of workshops. You get to network with other local officials and current things. And we have an email from Deanna. I have two days of vacation left. I have two days of vacation left, 16 hours left. And I know that when you leave without a two weeks' notice, you are not granted those vacation hours. I think with everything that has gone on and having completed my job immediately, because of all that has happened, I should be granted those hours. So she's asking the select board to grant me the. So we granted her those hours, though we don't pay for vacation, do we?
If you need vacation policy, we can get any vacation with a food. Yeah, we still have it with our prepaid, a free prepaid agent. Yeah, it comes with you, but you have to give two weeks' notice.
The board's going. Sixteen to the.
I was entertaining letting her have a vote so long as it meant that she wasn't willing to pursue the end of the agreement or the interaction with us.
It's possible.
Correctly, if I understand correctly, we're not obligated to pay those hours out.
Should we table this until we find out? I mean, you don't have to answer, it's not vital yet.
Thank you.
If you agree. If you're used. If you feel more comfortable, it's up to the board.
Since she hasn't resigned.
Yes.
And she didn't give any notice.
No, she left. She left after she heard that, she left after the town heard through the grapevine that what happened in the executive session and was totally reamed out. So she did not ever come back.
So those orders that we got, some of the emails that signed weren't in her.
And that, we reciprocated, particularly virile, ringing me out and then she resigned, right?
Do you feel comfortable coming back?
When she worked for you, six, eight months? I make a motion that we pay her her vacation days. What was that? I made a motion that we should pay out the requested vacation days.
That's a motion.
Any further discussion? Can I have all those in favor?
Aye.
Close? Okay. So I have the correspondence. I'd like to welcome Derek Travis. Travis Stan.
Travis Stan.
Travis Stan is here. Paul Stelio from Northern Border Mountain.
Border University. Good to meet you, guys.
And trust, we have George Putnam, who is the executor of Tony's CS3. And he had a talk to us, and I'll let them talk. It's time to, an email with information that was over. Did not prepare.
Just a word about George Putnam. George was a lifelong friend of Tony's, and he's now the executor of the estate. And we've been dealing with George now for quite some time to see that Tony's wishes come true. Tony accumulated his property, it's a total of 55 and a half acres, over a period of years. And for quite some time, it was based on previous versions of documents. He was interested in seeing his property conserved in some fashion. And about a year before Tony died, he contacted the Northern Rivers Land Trust. And said, "I really want to talk to you concerning my property. I think it's a special place that has some interesting ecological features, and I think it should be protected." About that same time, Tony learned that the town was establishing a community forest. And he realized that the eastern end of his property shared a border with the community forest. And he thought, "Wow, wouldn't it be nice if my property not only could be conserved, but could become a part of that community forest?" Unfortunately, Tony's health continued to decline over that year. And we were not able to proceed with conservation of the property. But Tony was thinking ahead of him and provided provisions in his last testament that would take care of all of that. And so the will deeds the entire 55 and a half acres to the Northern Rivers Land Trust. And Tony's wishes are expressed in the will that the property should be conserved and that it should be provided without cost to the town of wanted for inclusion in the community, as part of the community forest. So that the question that we have for you tonight is, is the town willing to accept this property and add it to the community forest? Now, there's a few more details. The land trust, as the new option, will sell the vital property, carving out about a two-acre parcel, and you'll see that in the map. That's a rough approximation of the two acres. That two acres contains Tony's house as two outbuildings. We would propose that the land trust put that two acres up for sale through the normal real estate process to buy dinner, I suppose. The remaining acreage, which would be about 53.4 acres, I believe, would be given to the town at no cost to be added to the community forest. It would be conserved before we give it to you. And it would, the conservation easement would be a simple amendment to the one that exists for the existing community forest. So, and that's considered minor amendments. So I don't, I'm hoping it's not going to take a lot of paperwork to get that done. We've already had a number of conversations with the Vermont Housing and Conservation Board, and they are going to agree to do that minor amendment to the existing easement. We wouldn't go further than that. Tony really wanted to see his property used by the public. And so we're further proposing that from the proceeds that the land trust would gain from the sale of the two acres and the house, that we would establish a parking area on the 53 acres and a trailhead piazza. And the trail that would take you back through Tony's property to the border with the existing community forest. And then if the town wanted to further that trail elsewhere in the community forest, it would be there, so that would be done. The estate has agreed to pay the stewardship and down that you're familiar with, the $6,500. So there would not be any cost to the town for that. The estate will cover that. And then we also intend to memorialize Tony's memory. And, you know, he was a, he was a avid outdoorsman, great hiker, a birder, got copious notes on every bird he ever saw. And so we intend to establish an alternate conservation fund that will be used for conservation efforts, not only elsewhere here in Awoka, but throughout the Northern River, the land trust region. There is an old wooden camp on the property that is in the process of being eliminated. That'll be one of the requirements of the conservation agency that have that removed. And that is already in process. We've also started the application for subdivision. One of our trustees, David DeLucius, handled all of that work for us for a while. And I know has already completed an application with the town, and it's preparing the application that has to go to the state to get that subdivision done. So again, the question before you is, are you willing to accept ownership of that 53 and a half acreage and add it to the community forest? We'll be glad to answer any questions that you might have.
So you've had conversations with the board? Some of the stewards?
I presented this same document to the town forest stewardship committee group last Thursday, and they voted unanimously in support of this proposal. They seemed to be very excited about it. They were very interested in having a trail through the property into what's now the community forest. And this also, you know, it provides a parking area in the community forest on the western side of the property that you do not now have. So I think they look at that as something positive.
Yeah, I think they were struggling with how you would get up into the forms property in up in that area, because it's quite a ways to go from East Elmore Road.
Right, right. It needs to be right there. Originally, SUNY Wasteland was going to provide two parking areas. They were both on East Elmore Road.
Yeah.
I understand now there's only going to be one. The one that is going to go near the bridge that crosses the string there. This is what I heard, that the Fish and Wildlife was concerned about threatened species in that area, and were reluctant to approve that parking area. So you're still going to have one on East Elmore. And it's very nice, it's already completed. I've been there, it's quite nice. But I think having one on the western boundary will be, be very nice. And it will be near, or just south of the intersection with Chayefarm Road and Elmore Pond Road. There's a nice flat area that makes you right into the porch there. We also want to honor, you know, Tony's gift. So the kiosk that would be placed there at that trail there, we'd like to have a few words that acknowledge Tony's gift to us and to them.
I wondered why, why, if you could just clarify for me, why the Vermont Housing Conservation Board has agreed to this amendment? Do they, they have a conservation easement at property?
No, so.
So what did they have to do?
BHCB and Northern Rivers Land Trust.
Yeah.
Co-own the easement of the existing local community forest.
Well, just note the board.
Yeah.
So.
All 735 acres are covered by.
Even the Vermont Housing, that's one, that's one I'm trying to get to my head. Even the Vermont Housing has holes, easement on the board's property. I didn't pay for any of it.
Yeah, the entire 735 acres. One of the conditions of them providing their funding was, we hold an easement on the entire 735 acres. And they also like to have a local land trust sort of be the roots on the ground. That's when they came to us and said, "We do co-own that piece of wood." If you're adding Tony's property to the community forest, you do a simple amendment to add that acreage to the 735.
Just clearing my head, because I knew all the funding for the board's property was through the US Forest Service. Right, so I was wondering. Anyone else have any questions? Thoughts? No ones?
My feeling is, we're not. It's being given to the town. Why should we have the housing part of it added to it?
It's not going to be anything, it's already.
No, no, I mean, you're talking Northern Rivers. I'd like to see it just Northern Rivers, period.
Yeah, because, because the funding we got from the other, well, he was one.
That's, I'm not sure I understand.
He, and he wants to know why just the Northern.
Why can't it just be more?
Land Trust has the conservation and why the Vermont Housing Conservation Board has anything to do with Tony's property.
Yeah. There are, I guess, two ways you could do that. But Northern Rivers Land Trust could conserve the property, it would be protected. But once you add it to the community forest, it now has to abide by that existing conservation easement. It's, it's really just a formality. It doesn't change a whole lot by having BHCB involved. But it does, in this sense, we have now a state agency that's looking to see that the forest is forever protected. I think that adds more weight to the protection. We wouldn't want 50 or 75 years from now, a different board to be sitting here and decide, "Okay, let's sell the, let's cut taxes and we'll sell the community forest." Well, you're going to have a state agency preventing a future board from doing that. That's just one example. So I think it adds strength to the town to them by having BHCB involved. It adds strength to the protections that are placed on the forest. I hope I helped.
Well, to, you know, you got a forest, you have the two, two entities as joint entities conserving the property. And so then you, you're adding another little thing into the forest, so just the umbrella just kind of goes over the thing.
Yes, and there might be one other reason why you would want BHCB involved. And I can't say for certain that this will happen, but BHCB may be inclined to provide additional funds to the town or stewardship of the property. But it has been mentioned to me, there was no other figure mentioned at the time, something else is mentioned, not additional.
The only questions I have, and I don't want to bear feelings, I guess, that I have, are the same one that I had about the original town forest, is potential future maintenance costs and the hit to the grand list.
And we understand those concerns, and that's, that's why we wanted to farm off the house and to keep that on the grand list. Make this cost again, there could be stewardship moment to help defray those costs from BHCB.
At the end of the day, it's a wonderful gift from, you know, a person who lived in town, who would be to turn that down.
One minute?
Very make a motion. I make a motion that we graciously accept this wonderful gift and add to our town forest. Just a wonderful opportunity.
In a second?
I'll second.
Any further discussion or questions before we move on? All those in favor? Close? Okay.
Thank you very much. Well, thank you. I know Tony would be very happy. We're going to stick around for the bear's spot for steps from the, if you don't mind.
No, Mark, are you, are you here for the school street water rent?
Yeah.
Is anyone else coming?
Nothing.
Well, I was just.
I had a cure earlier.
I was just going to ask the board if we could maybe move that up and then move the bear's spot up on the agenda for the board. So we are going to move up off the agenda, School Street Water Rent next, and then we will move on to the addition of bear's spot. Go back to me, too. Okay, Mark, you're on.
This came, thanks for the copies of the invoices that you couple missing for this tax gift. And we talked about keeping it the same 25 a month, or, yeah, 25 a month. For December, or maybe another full year. As far as I can tell, the balance right now, I don't know if this is, this is the latest one, it's just $860. Live one to August 20.
I see it.
So, yeah, profit loss. But encompass the actual, what's in there right now?
So this was printed on August 20. It's July 1st today, Tom, you found this, you have this $360.
So that's what's in there.
So you're making, you're, you are suggesting to the select board that we continue keeping the water rent at, what is it, $60 for six months? What is it?
It's 25, 300 a year, 150 a month.
Twenty.
Continue paying.
Twenty-five dollars a month. So that would be till next August. It's usually in a year.
Well, the bills are January to end of June, and they have been for years.
Our, our year ends June 30.
Every bill I've gotten is for June, um, January 1st to June 30th. And then.
Yeah.
1st to December 30.
Yeah, we've, yeah, that's true, yeah.
So that will continue, right? Okay.
Did you discuss like who was going to majorize or another?
Um, Kurt, between Kurt, myself, and Paul Phil will still be involved. And we'll take care of that this fall. Possible going to rain on the one, on that. Man, that's a word we have to bring, come on. Easier to get into it. Um, the other thing is, is the road up there.
Yeah.
Is all grown and.
Yeah.
Something to think about. I mean, a four wheeler can still get up there to do repairs if you need. Um, the sugar lines used to be able to drive pickup trucks up there. But the sugar lines are pretty low now. Um, there's a culvert that.
Yeah.
Really like to be fixed. Um, and then if the trees were cut down, then somebody could ma- maintain it so it doesn't grow back up. It's cattle land, so I don't know. It's up to you guys. If the four wheeler can get up there to do repair, if we fall in an ocean, I mean, that's, that's what they'll do.
It is. That, that was the.
They can go under the sugar.
Good reason why I got them the state to save the west overrun.
Good.
Because of, uh, they said we did not have to do to dismantle it and fill it in.
That's good.
Yeah. And I told them because they'd have to pay for new cover. You have to cut trees.
What do you want to do with it?
It does need a lot of work.
Yeah, well, it looks like more than it really is. It's not that much.
If you take cover, that's. So my question is, it's very confusing. So you, the town has said we've become a railroad for that one. And it's really unrest over the property. Isn't it? It's very confusing to me.
Yes.
What do we, what does the town actually own? Do we really have a right to cut those trees?
That's cutting the right way to get to the reservoir and springs for service maintenance.
And if you had to think of the lineup, you'd have to cut the trees. I mean, that's part of the right.
Yeah, we did that in '05. We put a brain line in from the parking lot all the way up to the reservoir. Or the salvage did it. It looks like a mess, but an excavator, he just went straight up and just, you know how it worked. So, yeah, it's, that line is brand new all the way from reservoir down to the shut off here. There's a shut off at the parking lot. And then there's some old stuff that weaves along. Everything on the street is brand new from, you know, '08. So it's in pretty good shape. I think it's. Just every once in a while, the float's up top. We, there's three floats in the reservoir and sometimes those need attention. But they're fine. Now, let's clear it up. So I don't know what your question is about being able to cut trees or if it's.
We have to get to it.
Roy used to keep it up. Yeah.
Yeah.
Usable so he could hire a spire with them up there.
Well, we'll put it on the to-do list and show and we'll have to figure out who's going to do it. The culvert. Well, I mean, it needs brush cutting all the way out. I mean, problem is that if you get up there though, it's going to get to that cover.
I don't mind. I was going to volunteer to, to cut. Um, but I wouldn't do it until this first frost. I'm interested in going up there where all the ticks are right now. Think about it.
We will, we'll, we'll have it on.
Before the saw's off.
Yeah.
This point, I'm sure they did their.
Thank you.
And, and as far as the town's commitment to put in for the original property and use of the sector, I'm just repeating, I really didn't think the town should put what they should in there for all the years it's been. But it's, it's no real way to make anybody do anything other than getting a bunch of stupid lawyers involved. And I'm just saying, I'm just suggesting we come up with one, three, four, five. Ready? Not.
If the town were to, just thinking out loud here, the road needs to be maintained, the culvert needs to be changed. If the town were to do that with the water ran, the committee, whatever your guys' name was, be willing to accept that is, I think, I think that's. Just thinking out loud here, I think that would really be the only option that we have.
Yeah.
As far as how we could come up with one. Yeah, because you have that hurdle. Yeah, the only equipment could do something in time. Hey, I feel like I'm just going to go up to something.
No, no, nothing. It, it seems like more than it really is, especially when you, if you saw it on all the leaves, you don't want to see it, you know, exactly. I guess that's.
Thank you.
Yeah, we'll see you guys later.
Okay. A vision for Bear Swamp. So, uh, uh, the board needs to decide, um, before we put the conservation easement on that property, that the voters are true, what, what we want to see on that lot. And then we need to decide who is going to designate or build it. Who's going to oversee it? Does the board have any thoughts on what they have to say on that property?
It should be the right thing, uh, yeah, it needs for the anywhere to apply it to, drivers, vehicles. And then further up in the road, so at least we can get a spare pack out if there's a, a problem coming out. And I don't think it'd take much, because that's already got the soil around here.
There should be some sort of signage right there. Kiosk meaning not necessarily this, like this.
It's just, it's just like a cesspool on a road. Just saying, Bear Swamp.
Now, you want to know because of the ribbon into the easement or, um, it's not that you will provide, that we will provide?
Yes, before the easement is written, it's nice to know what's going to happen on the side. Because once the easement is signed, it's very difficult to make changes. So, you know, if you want to put up a parking area and a kiosk, that, that's fine. I don't see any problems there. But you don't want to sign the conservation easement and that not being there and then have to come back and try to amend it. That gets much more difficult. So, yeah, the more input you have on how you want to use the, the property, the better. I have even mentioned it to Gordon's committee, you know, the forest committee, that they might have some thoughts on it as well. And personally, he seemed, said, yeah, sure, that's, you know, we're already working with 735 acres, adding another 10 to. It's, it's not a challenge for them. That was the sense I got from Gordon.
Are you doing, do you want to know any more?
They, no, I haven't heard any discussion from the forest committee on that subject. Yeah, it was only a, a one on one with Gordon. I'm sure they really had some ideas.
I can see adding a provision in the future for kiosks, even if we don't have one starting out with.
Yes, absolutely, yeah.
I, I, my opinion, you know, maybe, you know, and I thought, like, maybe try to ask some people tomorrow, it's going to Friday at the barbecue, is to keep it as natural as possible so people could enjoy it. But I don't know whether, I have walked that property with Jim Ryan and Kate. Whether you really need a trail in there. There's not that much property, really, is there? It's, uh.
It's, I think some of it's kind of wet.
Yeah.
So, yeah.
Do you need, do you think there needs to be some, um, area carved though where you get into the, in the water? A little kayak or something? No, Jim has, Jim has gone through there. And, and the people birding there, how do they, they don't want them. It must have gone to.
It's a lot of perspective.
I have, there's something.
That's, that's been thought.
Well, I mean, would you want, if you were a pilot, would you want to have a, not like a boat, but.
Right.
You know, landing.
Then.
A designated, a designated place to go in, something.
Here's one, what is it, about 100? About 100 yards down there and there's a real nice little cold access onto that waterway. And that could be farmed out. It's big enough. It's already a general, well, for playing.
Certainly worth looking into. I, I'm not a one-stip resident, so I'm not going to know. I think you're fortunate to have a lot like this. And, and, you know, asking that the town barbecue was a good idea.
I just don't see a lot of trails, maybe just a, a marker, the rounds of wood.
Yeah.
But not getting down into the, through the corner to the.
Yeah, right.
Waterway, because that sounds sloppy.
Yeah, because you had a parking area there where, I don't know if guys hunt in there? Or somebody could park and go further into Bear Swamp, beyond the 10 acres? I don't know.
It's pretty sloppy when you get off from the property.
Yeah.
Lot of beaver ponds.
Yeah.
I wouldn't want any camping.
Yeah.
For homeless people.
Yeah.
So it might have been, need to be monitoring and for garbage.
We would, we would hope the town would do that, perhaps. If the, the town forest committee or give the volunteers, we don't. Once it's conservative, we're going to monitor the property. But that's only on a manager basis. Perhaps more often than that early on, until we see, you know, how the public's going to engage with it. It's going to be more than once a year.
So Jim Ryan has offered, um, to brush law. If you want, you brush law and then you, you know, around the parking area and stuff. And he's kind of offered to, um, keep an eye on it, you know, so people aren't threatening.
I was just going to say that. He's right there in the neighborhood. He's, he's a perfectly volunteer to keep an eye on it. Yeah.
Can I ask them to see if you have any neighbors too? Might be interested in helping them out.
And, sorry, that's really pretty interesting. Looking at that, because you. That's definitely.
What was that?
I can't remember. It's that.
Hard.
It was hard. Yeah, yeah, he's right there too. Because I think she's probably pulling her stuff.
That's a little bit, yeah.
So, it's good if you gave us a deadline. We've worked well on it.
Actually, don't get off our client's deadline. In fact, one of the first words I'll write on the town is usually, you know, we want to proceed as quickly as you do. You said.
But there's always some other pressure.
Water.
You know, it keeps getting to the bottom file, you know, it's like, it'd be great to have an answer by the 7th or something.
Yeah. It would be nice if we could, you know, get all done and the conservation easement signed by next spring. Something, maybe next year.
Okay, so you decided you'd like an answer maybe by next, um, March?
I'm going to make it December 1st. I mean, we have answered far.
Yeah.
We'll have an answer and then we'll leave it up to them to. So we have some select board suggestions, parking for like maybe five to 10 cars, signage, kiosks, and possible. Swords, whatever that looks like. Anything else? As we're talking to people on Friday, we can now maybe have a map of that area and just, you know, they can look at it. See, you know, we can put what you think we want on there and see if they want to add anything. They agree with it. I think you have the map on the website, don't you?
Yeah.
Yes.
Thank you all. Yeah, see you.
Thank you all. Always. Thank you very much. Take care.
So I guess I'm really disappointed, um, executive session, um, according to the BLTC, carries with it an expectation of confidentiality, as it, um, you know, this, that's why we go into these, uh, executive sessions, um, they have to kind of be handled with care that, you know, the legislature only let them go into them for certain reasons. Uh, to me, the, the most important is that, um, you know, when you disclose this conversation, when you have these personal issues, then people, um, it creates chaos and people get, you know, it's, it's a good conversation. They're not really doing any, um, decision making. And, um, they need to be handled with cares because they may be far associated with the public knowledge of the matter, um, at the time. they need to be handled with cares, because they may be far associated with the public knowledge of the matter, um, at the time. So I want to know, Kurt, did you tell your Karen, because, uh, Karen has been talking to people, and I go back to the window.
I don't actually.
You did, how did she know what went on? How, how does it hold what went on in the executive session?
I don't, I just have my notes, she might have read the notes, I don't know.
Well, it caused a lot of unnecessary hurt, um, chaos, and now we are minus, uh, all right, but a very good employee, who was really like, working here, um, and was dedicated, but the ramifications of it were too much for them to continue to, to work here. I would just hope in the future, that, you know, what's said in executive sessions, there's no law that said, you know, says you can't, but that's what it's for.
It's tied into our overall office, isn't it? Credibility and.
Right, I mean, if, if it's out there in public, we should have just not gone into executive session, we did that to prevent, we were just sharing some information to prevent, um, harm to someone. And then that fired, because it wasn't kept, coffee, and chat. And somehow Karen knew, because, uh, she came in and talked to Deanna, so, and, I don't know. Anyone else have any comments about that? I don't want to be the bad nation.
That's it.
I have to almost leave the bad person.
Now, my concern is that most people say, don't know who we are, or what we do. That reflects a public, the despair about the voting process, and they, you know, we're not getting good turnout from meetings, but, the thing of it is, we all took a note about this, and I just can't see there's any wiggle room there. Nothing. You know, we're we're working with a strike pen, thank God, but I mean, that's sort of it, yeah. It's important for us, I think, to maintain credibility. These things are unfortunate, and they happen like this, this is not good.
Can I just ask that if we go in an executive session, that we keep it confidential? With you. I mean, when we come out and we take action, that's public. So, are you ready for your report?
Um, regarding highway, the crew finished the Elma Pond Road, uh, veteran grant. Um, so we had to let, we had to rent a thirty-five thousand pound excavator, so we rented it for that grant. And then we had an extra day on it, so they went in and completed the Corley Road washout that happened this year in the last flood, the July ten flood. Um, so they added big four-foot rollers, and then had three on top, and they really, uh, short of that area that's along the bridge. Then they added a few ones to gravel, so the Corley Road residents are happy. Um, they've been hauling sand, they've been, um, they graded, uh, West Hill, and they filled in a couple of pretty dangerous washouts on West Hill, so that's ready to go. They will look at ditching maybe next season, look at, look, ditching. The ditching in the next season. They've got a lot of other projects identified, and they're just not sure if that will happen this year, but made the road, definitely improved the road. And they just started on the East Hill Road Grant and aid, and then they've been working on various other smaller plus. Um, I had changed a while ago, but I just wanted to let this, like, where you know, my hours, so I have ninety-six point two-five bank hours, plus sixty hours of vacation time, so I've sort of altered my office hours to kind of allow me to get out of here earlier on Thursday, so that I can kind of start to minimize the forty hours, the thirty-five hours a week, so I am working Monday through Wednesday, um, from seven-thirty to four, and then on Thursday from seven-thirty to noon. Obviously, I adjust if there are things, but just trying to minimize some of those bank hours. Um, FEMA, so FEMA's been interesting, we had originally had all of our work to be completed combined. Um, it was upon our new project manager's suggestion that we pull the green, the East Hill Greens culvert, they pulled it right across from my greens house, it's under the pavement. Pull it out of this work to be completed, because the other projects are, you know, maximum forty thousand dollar projects. Culvert replacements primarily, um, and this one could be a three hundred thousand dollar project, so this is a bigger project. So we separated it, it's now a project, and, um, I have signed the one to be completed, the other remaining project, so that's moving off to CRC. Uh, and they'd actually costed it, they costed the projects with those double, almost double, this is across the board, but I costed them now, so I'm told that cost will vary, you know, at what we actually get. Um, but we started the process. I do need board approval, because now dealing with the, the, um, East Hill Greens culvert, I sent that off to Joey Wilson, and I got two bids for, um, designing, and to Patrick Ross. Patrick Ross and Joey responded. Um, Joey Wilson, and Joey Wilson's bid was the lowest. We have not yet formally awarded the, the, the design to him. FEMA is saying that, based on hydraulic studies, we had two hydraulic studies, one done by the state, and then, uh, we should have contracted, was it Eastern Mountain? In, like, New England. New England Consulting, way back in, I think, October and November. We found out that he contracted with New England to do the hydraulic study, so we had two hydraulic studies, both a bit conflicting, um. So I asked for just an estimate to do the design for these two companies, and, um, Joey Wilson's came in lower. So I've been asking Joey Wilson, I asked him to proceed to get this project costed to do, he gave us a two thousand dollar cost estimate design. Um, FEMA is saying that based on that cost estimate designs, they don't agree with the size of the culvert, they think it's a little bit elaborate for what they're sitting on in intermittent stream. The state, and the state is saying that that's an intermittent stream. Joey Wilson is saying, every time he's out there, it's running, a lot of them. So there's a little bit of discrepancy there. Um, so FEMA is recommending, and something new that I don't think was it was around, but not offered to the town back in the twenty-twenty-three flood, but they're saying that they will, we have two options for this project. One is to fund the, the design upfront, so to separate the design from the actual funding of the project. The second is to fund it all back in, you know, so to save the form of it, and that will fund it mainly. And so, both Joey and Mo, our, uh, program manager, are saying it would be best so that we don't get ourselves in upside down on the design, to actually fund the design, and I just need to know, like, to proceed with that. Any permission from the select board to move in that direction, rather than doing what we've done in the past, which is just keep going, and then fund, that maybe will. Because there's such a discrepancy on the design method.
So the, the ask is, can the select board be to write a check for two thousand dollars to get a design?
I already did that.
I see.
But can the select board approve that that's the approach that we're taking to FEMA, is that we're going to ask for funding, I'll, I'll give you a little more backstory, so, if we ask for the funding to get this design, maybe it's gonna cost about eighteen thousand, roughly. Uh, to get the design, if, then FEMA said, and, and I've talked to Joey, who said he would not design it unless with that elaborate of a design, unless he can prove that it's, I'm not, that it's more of an intermittent stream, and he was gonna work with a couple of people at A and R to do that. Um, so the eighteen, the, the money to get the design, if we decide not to go through with the project, we, we would have to be as a town. And I think Joey will take, drop two thousand off, because we were paying them to do that ten-year design.
So if, if we pay, if we, if we do it, it comes in, and we decide, and we have a design in, FEMA will pay for that?
Yeah, they'll give us money in front of them, just to do that. Or they will reimburse us for that, maybe not the fully two thousand, it says that that's a, but we have a mitigation with CRC, I mean, it has a lot of steps, but, um, they would, they would, um, pay for that first, before we started to decide to proceed. Joey is now implying, if they're not gonna list it as an intermittent, it's gonna drop down to just a culvert and not be a box culvert. So whatever culvert, he can stick there, so it'll be a much different project. But this is a better, and, and the FEMA needs, needs regard.
Just the part where we would have to pay, I just, that's on that. The part where we would have to pay.
If we decided to back out of the project, and FEMA gave us money to do the design, then we would be on for the design. There's not a chance, probably, I mean, that culvert needs to be replaced.
I was gonna say, what would the scenario be, where FEMA just funded the design, and then we backed out of the FEMA-funded project?
It's, yeah, so this was brought up at that, when Joey was saying, well, everyone needs requires a box culvert, but, but then the state doesn't say that it's, that they can support that on an intermittent stream, then then maybe we would back out, but I think that Joey's people willing to say, look, I'll design for an intermittent stream if we need to, so I doubt that we're gonna back out unless there's no money from FEMA, I mean, there's a lot of scenarios.
And the overall projected cost is three hundred thousand.
Three hundred twelve, if we went with Joey's first design, a box culvert, you'd have to get through that ledge, there's ledge there. Um, you're gonna have to either, um, drill it or, or, um, blast it. Put in something there, he thinks that there's probably, we need to do a six-foot, it's a squash culvert again. But again, you have to prove hazard mitigation, that you're actually doing, you know, that this is a good situation. I would have looked at it, and even if you just put in some cement, you know, the traffic cement blockers, and then block it off, so that you direct the water through the culvert, you're gonna save a lot of that overflow that, that has done all that washout where they have, you know, brick wrap, because it's gonna direct the flow into the culvert as it stands. So the temporary, because we can do, this is not gonna happen until next spring or something. And I talked to the state, they will give us, um, as long as we can show that, you know, we're designing. So in my mind, I'm just worried if FEMA, I'm sure it doesn't have money, or whatever, that's my business. But then, if that's the case, I don't know if we would have to give that money back.
That's, that's where I'm worried, if they're gonna fund the design, and they like the design, then they would likely be the ones funding the project, and if they didn't fund the project, who would be writing the check back to?
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm just having, uh, I'm confused about the system that's in place. On how they want us to do that. Previously, my understanding previously was, you're on your own, you go out there, you get the design, you do the work, and then you submit the work with FEMA, and they decide how much the work is worth. What it's sounding.
Including engineering costs.
Yeah, what it's sounding like now is we are going to try and front-end the bath, and get a check from FEMA to cover the total cost of the design.
They're operating it up now, and sort of mini projects within the project, so, and I said, well, why didn't we do this since money breached, and Mo said, it's, um, if they're not real experienced project managers, they may not be able to provide it, and so she feels like, and so does Julie, that it's a good idea, and as do I, because then we can really figure out, and, um, we're just gonna have to be a project of our problems as a learning one, if we decide to build a laboratory, or less than that.
So, how did Grace feel?
Grace was, uh, she said, well, while I cannot tell you what to do, she, she thought it was a good idea.
So in twenty-three, we hired the engineers, they, they lived with design plans. And then we incorporated that cost into the. So this is just the opposite. We just want the one that explains it, isn't it, like?
Yeah, here's, dangle the carrot, and then beat us with a stick there each.
That's what we're doing. We'll get the design, and we'll incorporate it in the project.
But I just, I just can't understand the scenario where we pay for the design, and then FEMA would say, no, no, we're not gonna pay for we're not gonna pay for the work that we paid you to design.
I'll only need FEMA to run that money. That's my concern. Where FEMA is paid. But then I can't imagine, as you said, are they gonna come back and get that money back? They're not gonna have fully employees to.
It sounds like we need to design anyways, long-term, whatever option we go with.
Well, that's kind of what I'm thinking, I was hoping, but I, I think our structure plan is only for class two roads over there, no. We can do structure plans only for, so, if we have to design in place, and they pay for it, and then they run out of money, you know, we can apply for the highway structure plan, we did a big one on Fair Swamp. That was, but it's not too real, really, though.
It's just so much closer, because it was pretty much shallow.
Right, exactly.
I, so my, my concern is, if FEMA runs out of money, I, this is my first time kind of through the status of innovation process. And so I asked as many questions as I could about possible scenarios, and why, why would you recommend this, and Mo, the greatest answer is FEMA, Mo, because she said, I don't want you guys to end by, you know, end up upside down on this project. So, you know, moving forward with maybe Joey's first design, and then getting through it, and then FEMA saying, no, we're not gonna ask, so they would like to see the design first.
Yeah. We're gonna pay for a design one way or the other, this way there's enough community to get it paid for.
So he's gonna check first about the intermittent stream, or whether it's a perennial stream, or whatever, before he starts his design.
Well, we know it's an intermittent stream, right, isn't it, or has it changed? Right, it's so, like, they don't, you know, A and R doesn't update their streams all the time. But right now, FEMA's only saying it's, it's an intermittent stream, so they're only gonna do, they have their calculations on a bridge or watershed, and things like that. So they will only pay for approximately a six-foot culvert.
So, um, but you went up there.
Yeah, yeah, I saw the, yeah. There's, it wasn't rushing, but this was the dry spell. Um, so I don't know if it's perennial, but it behaves, so this is where you get into trouble, it behaves like a full-on stream, but then there are the issues that are going on, too, where it's jumping. Like it's full on stream, but then there are the issues that are going on too, where it's jumping. It's just moving, it's not channeled into the culvert, so it's just rushing up and then popping the road and then causing all that washout. So. I don't know, it's looking like probably, Joey said he had this problem. We didn't able to convince the state to go forward. I don't know what it would be, so first, the first step is to tell us, to tell FEMA that we would like to proceed with the plan. The plan is to, the design. And then, then I would award it. Probably Joey, because he's seen his big hand in the works. Has he been to the site? Yes, many times. And he said, it's always the water there. So he would handle the permits for us, that's another thing Patrick Ross listed on his. His bid that he would not, that his price did not include. But maybe he said that because there weren't any. So if we need a motion or if you guys just give your okayed.
Seems like there's more than just the culvert, it seems like the ditching ahead of it is a problem too.
And it's going to be heavy eight run, eight runs and stuff, a lot of rock.
As, as development continues to happen. And people do more site grading and get rid of more site water. We are going to be seeing more water, so maybe when they label it was an intermittent stream, but. I mean, we just went through how many days without rain and you still saw water there. Anything that requires a six foot pipe to get rid of the water intermittent or otherwise. Should be labeled as a kind of major waterway item. Yeah, I don't know, I, I. Think that if everybody involved thinks that it's the right idea to do it this way, then. Would I say it's not?
Does it need more than one culvert?
Joey's going to design it and figure it out what it is. That's the whole idea, then. Have an engineer design and so FEMA will accept it and give us the money.
I mean, I've seen some roads down fourteen, eight foot, the state is four three. Because when you get heavy enough water, thirteen inches in eight hours. Six foot culvert is not going to handle. Handle where the culvert is, but not the rest of the road, but. We may need more than just that one.
And this is the culvert that comes out.
And it's right directly under where they added all that rip route and that full slope that is so slow to wash out and then.
Just to quickly change the subject, I was, had to go up and take pictures of that for FEMA. This weekend, and. Way down at the end, it's starting to roll, pretty good, and then there's, there's a place that's starting to ruin. Yeah, it's like it's moved past the rocks, going downhill at the end. Past the guardrail, starting, just.
I wonder if it's still popping the road, so we can put a couple of cement blocks in there till as an interim. Because if we can just direct that water into the culvert instead of. It, what happens now is it goes here and the culvert's right here, but it's just like over here and it's popping the road and causing all of that washout. So if we put the blocks in right here, it will at least direct most of the water into the culvert. And culvert's still there and you can handle it, it's rusted out on the bottom, but it could still handle the flow better than that. There's no culvert over here to accommodate anything, so it just accumulates and that velocity pops over and just flows. So that might be happening, might have happened.
I saw it, it's um.
It may happen with the last, this year's July. Is that something we need to call the contractor again?
No, I mean, it's just moved down, it's, it's. Just mentioning that Dylan should just be aware. I'm not an expert, he can decide whether it's a problem or not. Both, both East Hill and Town Hill, Town Hills is up above. And East Hills is down, um. But it's like the rip route was put there and then where it starts to fade out to dirt. Is finding a way.
Scavenging there.
Yeah. Okay, um. Is everyone in favor of, of Michelle moving forward with the primary engineering to the design? Whatever is necessary for the culvert. And road and stuff. So we're aware of that.
As far as the, the grant installation bits, no one showed up for the mandatory pre-bid needs, which I had last Thursday. Um, that nullifies the RFP basically because it's federal. Um, so then I began reaching out to individual companies, calling them through the phone book and, and whomever I could find. Um, was able to reach. Free, three companies, one was supposed to get back to me, set up an appointment, uh, she was here yesterday, they sent, submitted a video with PP phone. That was a lot higher than what we were given, I think we were given thirteen thousand, this was almost forty. So we have to, you know, but I'm waiting for the other two bids, one, um, which is browse coming next Tuesday, I think it's. Uh, and then I'm waiting to hear who bug me. Um, and then I'll continue to call maybe more, but that's at least three bids. So that's, I'm assuming the process that followed. Um, I'd like to know if we can contribute, remember, uh, last fall, last October. We took that opioid money that we received from Walgreen, Oklahoma. Walmart and a couple of other organizations through the opioid settlements. Uh, we gave it to the North Central Vermont Recovery Network because we couldn't find the valid use for it. Um, we've received another. Another hundred and twelve dollars, I think, that I'd like to, under forty-seven dollars and twenty cents. I'd just like to donate that again.
Is this going to be what it's been?
Yeah, and if we donate it, we don't have to track it as long as it's, um, being used. For opioid recovery in some sense, I don't like it from either from. The, the North Central Vermont Recovery, if we have documentation. I don't know, I thought of this, I thought the settlements were coming in two to three settlements, but they just kind of keep rolling in, so I'm not quite sure. The grants, how much more would it get? For the settlement.
So do we need to make a phone?
Yeah, I, I would, yeah.
It's good for the treasure of the mail.
I'll make that margin that we. And Michelle will move forward with this.
Any other questions about that? Giving a hundred and twelve dollars to the Northern Vermont Recovery Center, or what is that, one hundred and seven? On the favor?
Aye.
VPR came out today, um, to interview us, it was quite fun. They, um, are doing a series that they're posting to social media about small towns, the title is how do you pronounce your town name? So it was a lot of how do you pronounce a little bit, and, um, so it couldn't have been better staged, uh, we had. Anne Farley from, who was at the community gardens, they wanted to meet Jacks too, of course, I go once. Uh, and so I took him out to the gardens and Anne Farley is there, and so she was talking about how she looks on Richard Wolfette. So we got into that maybe, and then we just, you know, she was talking about selling the community garden and then. Yeah, I walked, we, we talked, well, and then I talked about the community trust and what we're going to be doing with the schoolhouse, and then we talked about the wastewater. Then we walked out to the rail trail and tied it all in. And he actually said that he would love to live in this town, he'd be like, what a cool town. Um, and so just look for the post on VPR sometimes, I guess I edited, no. Tried to stay out of it, but. And I finally talked with Kelly Miltec with passive regarding the insurance coverage for the community forest and potential parks that we may be, um. Acquiring, and I inquired if there's any concern that we should be aware of, and so. Her response was that for the proposed uses of the properties, which include high speeds, no sure biking trails and park land. Possible, uh, I have a new access, everything seems straightforward and we are covered. Liability is covered, uh, she said that she's going to send out, um, Larry Smith, who is a lots controlled consultant. When he's in the area next, and he's just going to come by. And then see if there's, if he has any suggestions to improve anything by the signage or whatever. Um, she did say that if we do a sponsoring races, maybe on the forest trails or whatever, that we need to ensure the reality contract. That was her only advice, but otherwise she said everything was fine.
Thank you for doing that.
Sure, and that's the end of mine. We had a first mail box and. We had it here, I put, I have a couple of funny, and I sent it out, um, the future. So I sent this to you, um, and I think we can just go through my. Questions and, and then just comments and my comments. Point by point. The first comment was on page two. And you try to make it so we can do that. Can I push you up closer?
What's that?
Can I push you up closer?
I don't think, maybe it's.
So the, the first comment was under section six A, um, hours of service. We just added, um, that the town clerk can set the hours for their employees, like the assistant town clerk, the select board. Um, we. Yeah, and the library trustees. Um, for the library and by the select board for all of the child employees, so we just elaborated that. That statement.
Yes, it sounded like it. I'm part of a separate, I was from. You know, wasn't it?
So I'm going to accept that change. The next change is in the paragraph below, I just highlighted. Um, it says all employees are expected to be in attendance. Blah blah, but employees who are calling in sick are expected to notify their supervisor as soon as possible by phone, text, or I added. Um, phone, text, or email. We just elaborated that. Just because we're updating this, this is really an over policy, so if I don't hear any objections, I'm just going to slip over these. And right then scroll down to page. Six. And there I've highlighted, it says currently a town employee should avoid conducting calories in the system because of her personal computer device or account. That is just unavoidable these days, um, because we text and use our own phones regularly. Um, because I text the guys all the time, text the, and like D M R C, I text Michael, I mean, I use text a lot. Um, and so I would recommend replacing the sentence with the following. If a town employee uses his or her personal devices for town business, they must conduct business with the same professionalism. As they've been using the town computer systems.
I want to ask a question. Would a personal device that would be subject to, uh.
Yeah.
It was, yeah. It's a quarter.
Yeah, they would be targeted.
Yeah.
They would only be able to access. For example, if somebody were to. Want access to my phone, they would only be able to access conversations I've had with other town officials. Or where I was discussing town business, they wouldn't be able to get into the discussions I had with my accountant.
It does, you know.
It does get.
Uh, would your personal device be subject to FOIA request?
And that's why I suggested, you're escape army, have your own personal email.
Yeah, because I wrote a handful of emails from the business, what a mess. That would be.
Is town, are town email addresses through Microsoft?
Not ours, not select one, so sorry.
You guys get internal email addresses?
No.
Okay, um, because.
Well, I have mine, I have a separate email.
You can get a free set of emails, yeah.
Yeah, that's what we did, I had.
So then you can just convert all of yours in front of this through that account.
Yeah, that's what we do, yeah.
I know, that's something on the policy.
I own this suggestion, this is for device and shuttle, less, less the cut counts, but.
Well, the thing is if it's in. So like I have three separate personal accounts on my device, and each of those accounts. Info can be accessed separately and separate than the device.
Well, I don't want people, whoever they are, road crew, whatever. You know, town office, you know, checking their Facebook, texting their friends. You know, they can do that during their lunch hour, but.
I have another clause here that adjusts that. This is just giving the, the employees, I'm sorry, I bumped. Uh, this just gets employees the ability to use their personal devices while they're working.
For town business.
Yeah. It says a town employee should avoid conducting town business using his or her personal computer, device, or account. We could say, uh, using his or her personal account, personal account.
What's, what's a personal?
Like my own personal Gmail, I would not conduct town business using my personal account, but I would use. My personal device to open up my select board cabinet. My personal device to open up my select board cabinet. Otherwise, we're gonna have to start throwing positive people because I just, you know.
Right. That sounds good.
I'd like to get the select board email addresses naming convention straightened out so that there's. I'd like to see the entire, anybody who has anything to do with the town have an email address provided to them.
In a Chromebook.
I don't need a Chromebook, I have my own device, but.
Like, yeah, you have your own device.
I do, I'm logged into my, my, made on my very own Gmail account.
As long as you have Gmail, you can access all of our drives too, which I share, I share the drives and the information that they store on the drive, Google Drive. If you have Gmail, you can access that. If not, I think it gets a little tricky.
Is, is the cost of getting each slideboard number?
It's. It is, browsing and grabbing.
It's prohibited.
It's, it's sixteen dollars, I just. Brought the business.
Or more per user.
And I don't know what you guys are paying, but I know that for me, it's sixteen dollars per user per month, but that comes with a boatload of storage and AI and. And, 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 but.
We just dropped the policy, that thing I did down a little bit, but until we need the new storage, but. Because we weren't using it, I mean, I think it works fine now, it's just. I'm more concerned about personal computer or device rather than account. I want to have the permission.
So let's go to the other one, see how they combine, I mean. Take my, my tears away.
Then I added section seventeen at the bottom of G6. It's a great, it's. It's, it's, it says section seventeen. I'm not sharing.
Section seventeen, use of personal electronics, it says the use of personal devices for non-work matters is prohibited during work hours.
That's what I add for personal electronics.
Just up. Excellent, have it written in policy, but how do you enforce it? Device audit randomly? Okay, so give me that.
You walk in and someone's like, letter, you know.
Yeah.
It's pretty, yeah. And again, you get fifteen minute breaks, I mean, you can, you can, obviously, you have to conduct some business, but it, it's blatant, I think.
Just gonna be to enforce, that's all. I've seen it so much in workplaces, it's. What you can do about it.
You know, it's so fun going into a store or something and waiting, wait, waiting for someone who's. You can't live a minute without talking to somebody.
We see the cashier busy on there, texting.
Yeah.
Two sixty cashiers, there was one person behind the counter handing out cigarettes for industry. All self checked out, I'm getting into weeds, you're gonna start on a rant, you know.
Yeah.
Two year, two year earlier, one town employee shouldn't, or should avoid conducting business on their own personal blah, blah, blah. Like you said, it's unavoidable and, and one of the premises. From the budget section where I wanted to get rid of the phone bill. It's down garage and get rid of your personal line in this building was that you guys have cell phones and you use them anyway.
We can get rid of my line, but Rena has a good point, he said, if you get rid of the one in the garage, where does someone have a cellphone in that emergency? So that's why I kind of hung up on that one, so I wanted to bring that up again.
Yes. Point, point here being, um. That. I do think that we need to do something about the statement where we are. Basically prohibiting them from doing that. But I. To Dylan's point, I also think that we should add in an awareness that if you choose to use your personal device. That account. Would be subject to.
I have personal devices will be subject to FOIA requests, um, on.
Wouldn't say would be, I would say could be.
Anybody could be, whatever.
Yeah, it's part of a negative experience.
But if I were somebody. In your position, for example, choosing to use my cellphone, I would like to be aware of that. That account could be subject to.
You can, I don't. I don't care.
But it's a good thing that it's closed up front.
So can we proceed with, uh, the following, if the town employee uses. His or her personal devices, they must conduct business with the same professionalism they would use. They would using the town computer systems, personal devices would be subject to FOIA requests.
Are we adapting this to them?
No, I mean, I was trying to click through this.
So we looked at other towns to see how they.
This particular, you know, I used to process for months ago.
There's nothing wrong with it, but I just don't think it. But I don't know. It gets smaller.
Okay. So moving down, uh, the use of personal electronics. Do you want me to look that up too? Use of their technology matter. Well, this is its own section because I didn't know how to put it in there. In the, in the, the use of town computer systems, so it's its own section. I just said the use of personal devices. For non-work matters is prohibited during working hours. Are we fading?
Yeah.
Can we make some additions?
I'm, I'm not ready, I'm. Say, I just don't see it this. Maybe, like I said, it. I'm not opposed to any of it, it just doesn't seem strong enough to be or. Enforceable, I've just been curious to see what other. Companies that have for. How they were, that's all.
Okay, I'll look at those two. So moving down, um. I did add, Dylan is on page eight. That midway, it says holidays falling on Saturday. So I just added, it says holidays falling on Saturday will be observed preceding Friday, holidays falling on Sunday will be observed following Monday. I added holidays falling on a regularly scheduled employee day off will be observed the day preceding the following holiday because. We've had that situation all the time and we don't have. Holidays falling on a regularly scheduled employee day off will be observed the day preceding or following holiday.
So an example being you don't work Fridays, if there's a holiday Friday, you could elect to take that Thursday or Monday.
It just expands and the road group don't work. Right, so we had that situation, fourth of July.
You, I picked on you because I thought they were covered by a image, like. I didn't think that they were covered.
This is not specified, I think.
I see.
Did they let you know when they're taking a vacation?
Pardon?
Did they let you know? Well, that's one thing I wanted to have written in there, they need to.
It's there.
Huh?
It's there that you must request.
They need to, they need to not let you know the Friday they store.
Dylan usually does, but if he's not here, it's not working and we have to. Like he said, Joe's gonna give me. They don't always know what Dylan's sick or whatever, people can't.
But doesn't it say you don't have to call with, with one hour? But really, what, what do we need them?
I don't think, I told them that they can't all three take off on TV anymore on. And I don't think that's gonna be an issue now because it's, it's. No, now. Because we have a different. I mean, yeah, he typed up, but as far as policy, it's, it's.
He has to say, oh, he's texting you, he can't text you that he's sitting or texts you that he's. Taking vacation, some employees taking vacation.
Oh, he says, oh, he's.
I think he just didn't remind them that. This, that's the correct way of being.
But you, well, time, time correct, they would have submitted from their phones.
After or before?
Before.
I hope so.
It would have to be before and it would be approved on the day.
And that's approval up from who? Dylan?
I know, you don't have to be approved. Just players now. Yes. It says in there that he just. You know.
I would say there, oh, I. The checks, it was like.
I just find that to be for like.
And you can claim it to them like this, he. He's very, uh. He will probably enjoy me not texting him about work at road stuff if I knew that he wasn't at work. But I have definitely called him and told him that. And he's like, yeah, I'm not there, call Joey. Uh, okay.
And that happens like in emergencies too.
Right.
So yeah, we'll, we'll buckle down on that, but can I accept, just moving on, can I accept the statement? Okay. Go ahead on. Um, I did change the year of the vacation leave, so. Year of service, I said through the first year. Because we, and then moving on to second through the fourth year and then give a amount of approval. Um, I added vacations times accrued beginning the first day of employment and then annually accrues on the employee's anniversary date. Then note the probation year and period restrictions.
I didn't say beginning the first year. What does through, through doesn't mean.
Through the first year. Because we had just the first year before and it proved off. She misinterpreted that.
But through, through confuses me even more.
I can change that.
I would just say beginning the first year.
Which is day one through first year.
Through. I think that's a clearer. Well, you say beginning first year, beginning. Beginning of the year or the end of the year?
And it's further detailed in the second sentence. Speaking of things that I don't understand, I don't have the IQ to understand why consecutive is in. The first sentence. I think they realize I'm nitpicking here, but consecutive is what throws me further.
Well, I didn't think about it, we can remove it. It's, oh, so you can't go away and then come back.
Ah, okay, makes sense now, I'm reminded of it.
So the first year, do you wanna say, uh, day one through, uh, end of first year? Something like that, I don't know. Because we say second through fourth year, fifth through ninth years, it's just through first year.
Just like first year.
First year, that's fine, just as you know.
Okay.
And then I explained that below, vacation time is accrued beginning the first day of employment and then annually accrues.
Yeah.
Okay. So I'm gonna accept that. Um, I did change below that, the next, in, uh, the employees are strongly encouraged to take an annual vacation. Um, it says if an employee does not use all of the employee's vacation leave in a year, it will be forfeited at the end of the calendar year, I changed that with this. I accept that, so, um, can we go back to, um.
So you, you put in there now employees annual day. Which is a change from what it used to be.
Anniversary, that's what y'all voted on. Change it to anniversary date.
Right? Might want to put in parentheses in case you don't understand, anniversary date means day, first day of hire. Or first day of probation, when is it?
Uh, no, you started growing, you just can't use it. So you can, the way we've, I, I figured out finally a way to, to ease this transition from fiscal year to anniversary year is just that you have to take. For example, if you get sixty days, sixty, um, hours a year, you. Put those over, you divide that by three hundred sixty-five days and figure out how much you get per. Hour, per hour, how many hours you get per day, basically, like. Like two, three or whatever. Um, hours per day that you're accruing. And then. If, for example, Dylan's hire date is in October, we have to go to October and say. How many, we can't just start him fresh in October because that would cheat him of all of these hours that he may have not used and could carry over. So in October, we have to add in, I mean, it's a soul formula. Okay, so in October, then we'll take these out, the, the days that get from July first off, his, his October and they say October first. Um. And we'll add those back in, we'll calculate the number of hours, we will reduce from those hours that he has already earned. Anytime that he's taken and then we will add those hours to the new that he is starting fresh.
And from then, it all happens automatically, you just have to do math this one time.
Yeah, cuz Belinda was saying we're just gonna reset it on their anniversary day and I was like, no, you're cheating everybody of this certain number of hours depending on where you fall in the year.
Yeah. Yeah, you have to do a calculation once.
Mm-hmm. So I worked out that formula. Um, but on sick time. Do we, we had agreed last time or we. And we didn't vote on anything, but the last time we met on sick day, we thought that we would keep, earn sick week, it would be an accrual. So we talked about an accrual, which means for every fifty-two hours you work, you get one hour sick week, so that would be accrued and adjusted. As Lenny can set it up at QuickBooks, we both looked, she can do that every pay period. So, um. Everyone is already accrued enough this year. But if we start this mid-season, midway, again, we're gonna have to figure that out or we're just gonna start this. Or next fiscal year.
Everybody's at the carryover limit right now.
Everyone has carryover, except for the. So we could either start it now. Because everyone has enough and they're, they're cute, they're copper. You get them through. So probably it would be a better idea than once we sign this to start the accrual method of, of pay period. This is the first.
Why are they losing, uh, when they do the accrual? Why are they losing?
Well.
They, we're taking away that. Long sum we've been giving them illegally.
This is the only place I've ever looked, they.
No, it's, it was misread, it should not have been like that.
So they will, if we, we're gonna have to figure that out. You know, cal- calculate. How we're gonna move forward because they can't keep accruing if they've already been paid. This, you know, given up for a certain number of hours, so we have to calculate that out as well. I haven't done that yet because I didn't know if you guys wanted to go with the accrual method versus that up to the top of the F five.
If you read that sentence, it says employees earn blah, blah, for. You know.
That's the state, it's the state.
That's how it's read, that's how it is. That's how we said that originally, I mean.
I was surprised when I came here and that was happening and then I insisted that because we were giving out. The, the HSA money, they were giving out the stipend if you choose not to do insurance, all in one sum. And remember I said, I don't think that's fair, if I were to leave tomorrow, you've just given me. And remember I said, I don't think that's fair, if I were to leave tomorrow, you've just given me twelve hundred dollars. So we agreed to do it at the end of every quarter, the amount that I would have earned.
And that's why I have been begging, begging, even when Edie was here, to update that so I could look at it, they, they never, ever did. You know, they never got it so that I could understand it. He followed it. You could see on the time sheets, they'd say vacation or something, but it didn't correspond with. Their pay stuff so that I could ever. Verify it was doing correctly.
Oh, it's, it's willy.
And I, I thought the information needed, legally needed to print it on the pay stuff.
Is that. Especially sick time, that's required. But it's just a willy-nilly, when I said that I thought my hours were wrong, in fact, I thought they were over. Um. Belinda just went in the white room all plain, said, we're worried about late, it's like, I'm not comfortable with that.
When is labor?
Sure, I calculated that for her, I went back that long time, she used to see when, and, and, you know, we adjusted that, but. I was not comfortable with this. So anyway.
Question on the table is whether or not we're going to be accrual or lump sum upfront?
Well, I'm not going for the lump sum.
I, I don't see a problem with the accrual, the thing that's unfortunate on the employee end about the accrual is that. If you are here for a month, uh. You have a crew, let me do the math quickly in my head, what, half a day's worth of sick time?
Get a day per every fifty-two, so it's a day and a half per every pay period, so about. Yeah, sorry, an hour per every fifty-two, so.
You have four pay periods, you're talking about four or five hours in the first month.
No, we only have two pay periods.
So, three hours in the first month?
Maybe, but that's every job.
Yeah.
But every job does.
Yeah.
Because it's a state requirement, so most people just follow.
That's, that's what I do with my coupon.
So I don't understand why, um. You know, if it hasn't really been on their time sheets, they don't really know what they have. What are they losing?
I think she said she doesn't want to cheat and cheat acts, so maybe why?
So, but I don't understand what the employees are truly losing.
I don't think.
By never even knowing what they lost.
They tracked it themselves either, I track mine religiously, I have many spreadsheets, I mean. I don't know, I don't know how that works, Linda, because it's just kind of answered in a very. In a way that I think that nobody knows how that works.
So I think you can go back to June thirty. And, and in.
You need to know what bank can carry it over to.
Yeah, on June thirty.
If it was there, that's what I'm saying, it may not have always, it may have been my. I don't know.
So in other words, it's a gigantic question mark, so you have no records.
Vacation's easy, it's clear now, except for the con- the, um, my crew to get carry over forty out. A vacation. But they usually pretty much write this. Forty out of it.
Anything I would know, I would track, right?
I.
The vacation's important.
If they wanted to know, I went back through every one of my spreadsheets, so if they wanted to know, they could come in and do that all the time. Or will Linda can do that and see what they would have approved, but you're going back years. Years and years that some of the people have been here five days. So I don't know how Belinda checks theirs because it is not ever recorded. At anywhere, she says she has no recording of it, but it's not.
Well, you know, I think on some of the quarterly reports that you have to send into the state, specifically retirement. You have to put the hours they worked in their quarter, so if you just went back, you know, this whole.
Say sick times.
So, what if? To get through, to get through this. Year, right, because if I'm understanding, I'm. It's been a long day, but if I'm understanding it correctly. The question is, when we move to the accrual period, how many hours do the employees currently have? So that we can start accruing on top of those. The next sentence says that the max that they can accrue is forty, it also says that the sick bank should not exceed a hundred and twenty, which I'm sure we'll get to that, but. To get through this year. Give them their forty. And then they don't accrue anymore unless they use below, get below the forty.
If you want to get up runs since we already have.
It's the only.
What did we give them, wow, is forty a year?
Forty for the, uh, full-time, I get thirty. Cause I, I work thirty hours and it's basically what you work. It, it turns out, I don't know how the numbers work this way, but if you were to divide. You know, what you work in hours versus the fifty-two hours, it groups out to, you get one week a year's time.
Minus whatever they used since July first.
Minus whatever they used, but I'm not speaking to confirm what that was.
Well, with that, that's only two months. Yeah, we could do, when if you look at.
You don't wanna start accruing moving forward, we would have to take some of that away because you've already banked it ahead. So we have to work out how we're gonna do that if we start this policy. If we start this this year, I could pull back some of those hours that we've already given them. Two months or three months worth of hours that they could have had, then all those other hours, seven months have to be stripped, or even nine months have to be stripped back from them. So that they then start accruing.
Well, all you could do is you could start July first at the forty, like what they have. It's. I don't know, that'll work either, I'm sorry.
I can figure out the math, if this is the way you want to see, it's, the problem is, Linda's gonna have to go back and calculate everybody's sick time if it's not in this. And if people have any questions about it. I think she's okay to do that because she really wants this to happen, I don't know how this ever happened this way, um, but. She doesn't, and I think she doesn't, to bank it either, like put it forward or pay it forward.
People feel we should have it on your pay stuff.
Oh, yeah.
Sick time.
And so we can keep track of it, it makes sure there's each.
I mean, I, as an employee, I knew all the time what my vacation and personal time was because. I stayed law. Some places said it was personal time, so it included sick time and vacation time. That covered it both.
Yeah, a lot of places, it's just more.
And there, then there's no question, you can use it as sick time or vacation.
That's right.
And so it's a whole issue. Just call it personal time. And combine them both.
I don't think this should be. I don't think all this about an employee may use sick time for the purposes below, I don't care what they use for.
But then, can we just go back to the accrual? Yeah, um, sticking to this point, and we decided if we want to move forward with the accrual and then ask that Belinda. verifies that the hours that they have banked at least move forward. Because really what we're stating is that we have just been incorrectly following, following policy. Um. And so that we wanted to move forward basically with the way the policy was actually written. We're just not even adopting that, we're just saying we're gonna throw that.
The correct mistake.
Once we adopt this policy.
Yeah.
So from this, the adoption of this policy forward, we're gonna correct the mistake and just make sure that, um. And maybe you might wanna put in the minutes that we're gonna ensure that. Um. That the account or whomever is going to, that, that sick time and vacation time are recorded on every pay stuff. They are recorded accurately in track in QuickBooks.
Yeah, it's unfortunate to have to do the math again, thankfully, we're not a. Under employee organization, but I, I do think that's the way to go, was to figure out what they've got to date and then. Accrue from there. Does that mean that the remainder of that something essentially will be a word to employee and ultimate beginning of the annual period that the rest of that goes away?
Why does it say that?
Oh, that was what I had put in there, that was my suggestion.
Wow.
Okay.
Um. So I just, yeah, I.
Yeah, that's.
That was put this there before and we highlighted it, so I just got rid of that. Um, then we have to move down to, there was a discrepancy here in the, um. There was a discrepancy in the document, it said, I just changed it, but it did say that you would get thirty days at any one time. So it said an employee's earned sick leave, bank shall not exceed thirty days at any one time, so I changed it to one hundred and twenty hours, which reflects. Accurately with other parts of the document. So if you guys are okay with that, I will just accept that. And then, again, I, it, it's up for discussion, but to make all these restrictions on sick leave, people are gonna call and say. Or whatever anyways, so these sort of, so have. All these restrictions on sick leave. You get rid of the restrictions, you don't have to change it to personal time, you can just.
Yeah, well, there, I'd like to say. If they're gone for more than three days consecutive sick leave, should have a doctor's note. That, that would, that would be my feeling because, let's say they use all their vacation time, and now you're saying, okay, it's fine to use your sick time. Yeah, it is sick time.
Get rid of the word sick, you just make it personal time because.
Right.
People need to go to the doctors and people need to go get their license, they put on, there's lots of things, I don't care what they do.
I'm not a classroom teacher, I don't need.
No, and they can say they, I'm not gonna.
Can I just add sick slash person please? Instead of getting a bit of sick? Because it, it's hard to differentiate vacation from personal, sometimes that gets really weird.
The thing, the trouble that I ran into when I was setting up my payroll account. With trying to just do paid time off. And not tracking individually vacation or six slash personal, whatever. Exactly, was, you could do, so like where, where Ally works, they do just paid time off, but it's because they have such an abundance of vacation time. Eric just left the job there. They have such an abundance of vacation time that it will never be, become a question whether or not they met state requirements. We are playing a lot closer to wire here with what we provide, so I do think that it needs to stay separated. Sick versus vacation. In order to prove that we're meeting our, our state law requirements, but it's hard on what they're using the time for. I don't care what they do. And, and that's, that's a thing that I have struggled with my entire about life is, when I tell an employer. I'm self-employed because I'm unemployed, but when I tell an employer that I'm not gonna be at place. It's because I'm not gonna be there. Uh, if there's a job waiting for me when I come back, I would be happy to continue working there, but. It's, they're my minutes and I'll sell you the ones that are for sale. And as far as accruing time loss, not asking permission. You know? Uh. I think. I think a lot of the employers that I work with, they think after three days you quit. So it's just. Yeah, fair enough. Well, if you don't say, well, yeah, I was. Sick or injured for three days and here's a, you know, the reason why. But earlier in that policy, you gotta learn, you know, an hour before your shift. And so. I mean, yeah, I used to call it Fiji on a week, I didn't feel like going in that, shit, yeah, fine and dangerous, but if it's three or four days consecutive.
Um, actually, that, I don't see that anywhere in.
I, I, I feel just like. Michael does, they can use this personal time, their sick time, any way they want. But at least after three days, we should know. Yeah, very similar, because if they're injured, then we gotta find someone for replacement, we can't just. Go back to this two-person rules. Even with the state. Extended their vacation. Even with the state, it was that way, I mean. One thing I like about the state, you capture vacation sick leave forever. Well, when I retired, I do a full paycheck from September until the end of December, I'm serious. Really, I loved it. It was, uh.
But what did you have to do last time, you, you were? Like.
I had to.
Scenario that.
I had to let them know, I had to let them know why I was gone. And what the, is what I, whatever I could give them for prognosis. Layman's level. You know, it's, uh. I had my wife and I swapped the virus back and forth for two weeks, I mean, you say they're getting better. I just told her, I says, this is not a good sign, is it? I was right, but that's, that was. That was like one years ago.
So I'll find the language from another policy for, you know, after three days, it requires a doctor's, if we connect that. That would be then one of the few. Requirements for, and then if you want me to, um. It does say may also be used for appointment or event, event authorized in advance by the employee supervisor. Supervisor should consult with a select board if they're unsure if it should be allowed. I don't know if you want me to get rid of all of this. I can't.
Speaking of being one of those persons in place.
It describes how you can use sick leave, if this, if the employee is sick, is ill or injured, if they have obtained professional diagnostic preventative routine or therapeutic healthcare. Live because for a sick or injured parent. Um. They're arranging for social legal services of, or obtaining medical care counseling. For the employee or the employee's parent, blah blah blah. Um, if they're dealing, stalking or sexual assault, it's like so. Is it, so.
Oh, you can see some of it comes out. There too.
Yes.
I imagine that whole thing has come out.
Yeah. Is that, that's what it, it does say. Does it say we, we were. Um, the. It just says may also be used for appointments. For any point, event authorized in advance by the employee supervisor. Supervisor should consult with a select board if they are unsure whether we.
This probably isn't the forum to do this, but all of us talk about supervisors. Is there an established command, what, so I'm thinking like the road group, right, so Joey and Jim report directly to, to, to Dylan. You know, all, all three of them technically work for us as a board, who are they reaching out to for, I think, to the local people, but. To let people know that they're sick, you know, are you the quasi-supervisor of that, or are you the supervisor again?
Dylan is so far, but he sometimes will let me know.
I was gonna say, who does Dylan report to?
Me, some, I mean, me, you know, I.
Right, right, as, as an arm of. Just trying.
I think that's one thing though, that we do need to work on, and I, I. Some of my research, the last couple days, that it was, rest of my, it was pretty important to. Have that.
What I already.
Organization charge.
Organization charge. Organization charge.
Yeah, so this is, this is probably not the form, but it, it was very pressing, right?
I think we can get a little stricter, you know, not stricter, but, you know.
Okay, ready?
Yeah, I just kind of leave them alone for a while so they can use their things, but, you know, try to keep them out too, so. Um, so hopefully, I love things.
Yeah, you know, I mean, I have it sometimes, things get to be slightly, I have, I started with.
Well, and there, yeah, and there are, there are, there are members of, you know, there are other county employees too where that could be. Where that could come up, I pick on the road group because they're easy to pick on.
Well, they're pretty much around the.
Yeah, yeah, fair enough.
That's the trouble.
Yeah.
So we go back to the question about this other stuff, these things, it's very restrictive. I don't care, but do, Linda said that she doesn't think that there should be that, any restriction on sick leave.
Unless we are required to have that in there through some kind of state law, I would be fine to see it all just go. Because the way that it's gonna work back here in reality, sure, of state statute, is whoever reports to the member is going to. Just say, hey, put sick time on my time card, and we're gonna go, cool, have a wonderful day.
I don't think that people should just be taking it without notifying someone, and I think this next sentence kind of. Uh, helps you occur with providing notice. I mean, I think you need to. Provide notice that you're taking a sick day to someone.
And that's where I'll put the doctors, you know, too, because those are the basic.
And this is just doubling down, employees must provide notice as soon as practical of the intent to use sick time. Which is just doubling down on, don't call in, you can't call in sick less than an hour before your shift.
You can't go home, you know, I mean, I think.
In the other case.
Yeah.
We had an employee one time, it was in the parking lot, walking into work, slipped on the ice and broke her arm. So what are you gonna do? It's there, you went to the hospital. So, practical sounds good.
Do we need to vote or anything to do with the accrual for the sick time?
No, we'll vote if we're, and then this, we want it.
No, I mean, you said it before, but I think that was just to answer that question. Um, I added section thirty-two timesheets.
Can I, one, yeah, option, uh, page, mine, it's page ten, talks about carryover of sick personal leave. That is a pretty redundant thing, because on page nine, it talks about sick personal time accrual limit. Sentences are almost identical.
Um, that's where they, they had a discrepancy.
I see.
That's where, so, I was gonna keep it, because, um, this one states. That if they don't use it, so one states that they can carry over a certain amount of here, and the other states.
I see.
But they do kind of, they do.
I see, they wrote, to me, they write the same, but I can read it quickly. And I'm not that great at it.
It says they may carry a maximum of five days forward to the next year. The other one says I think they can have unused. Oh, if an employee has unused sick leave exceeding one hundred twenty hours, that they will not be compensated. May I keep combining if you want?
Yeah, I, I.
And moving down to section thirty-two on page thirteen. And this section is talking about timesheets. And Lynn and I have kind of gotten conflicting information. I called the LCT and, and they emailed. Stay asking if we can require all town employees, including salaried employees. Um, to be required to submit timesheets and accurately report used vacation, sick, and health time during that period. The LCT said that in terms of timesheets, the town could definitely require a salaried employee to complete a timesheet. Weekly or every payroll. It is a good practice from the internal control standpoint to have a documentation about when folks are working. When they're using time off. However, I think in my email I specified an elected salary. But I don't know if that's the information, because Lynn is getting conflicted about an elected official. But I think if, I don't know. If the elected officials aren't always salaried, are they? Like, elected town clerk.
No, I know. Back when it was fees, they obviously have a timesheet, and I would assume that we could have. A move in fee structure and just kept the hour. Don't see anyone else.
Yeah, different town courts are paid differently than how we do it.
But they still need a record. Still need a timesheet for a record. I mean, that was, you.
Well, for the salary, no, it's just submitted as a certain number of hours. There's never anything tracked on there for these time. But I think that is usually because other time spent at other places, you know, doing other things, that it's kind of a wash.
Sounds like from that email. It's beer or elected or not. It does, for tracking purposes, they want, for internal tracking purposes, it's good to have it. Either way, which is what they're going after.
Yeah. Well, and, and again, how do we comply with the, uh. How would we comply with the accrual basis of our sick time if we didn't have the hours to base that on, or just to assume that?
Someone assumes that if there's salary.
It's a state requirement. So you gotta have a tracking.
I think, yeah. In my mind, it's proper.
Yeah.
You gotta have some way of knowing if it's sick time, vacation time, or worked.
Does this policy cover?
Now, probation.
Um, Lynn, I have it at the bottom. Termination. Evaluation in this forum. Um, it is, does not cover. Formationary period, uh, performance evaluations, employee discipline, and employee termination. So I think, I even have heard that auditors like to track it as well, so I don't think it's a problem. And I think it can be enforced, because all you're saying is track the time.
Yeah.
Whether you're, you're a salary or not. I track my time as well, because when I'm a salary, and, you know. It's actually good then, when you go in for your performance review and say that, look, I'm working seventy hours a week, give me more money.
Right, right, our, our salary agreement was for forty, you're adding seventy, you're getting screwed here.
Yeah, but some of them gotta give, so, you know. Useful information, because then you're saying duly, then you can have a fair assessment of, is this job, does it require additional? Hours or your assistance, or whatever.
Right, well, and, and in the event that. A town clerk wants to retire.
Yeah.
You know. The new town clerk walking in would be able to determine what the assistant town clerk required and what the job was, I mean. It's.
Just information.
Yeah.
So I would suggest that we keep it here, but that's up to you.
What's the, what's the conflicting?
It is enforceable. I can't see why we. Farm a sign. I think it's enforceable for including salary, including, doesn't matter.
Yeah.
In my mind, you're just asking people to track.
Definitely, it's enforceable for state law for keeping track of sick time.
It says, if the town clerk position are elected, the select board has no authority over them. Budget might be based on a contemplated hour a week schedule, but most of it is narrowly rated. The elected officials pay that sum equally divided over a year regardless.
Okay, why don't you get six times? We should not offer vacation time.
Of course, yeah, you shouldn't have a vacation time.
And in our particular case, when the voters allowed, allowed our clerk to move the salary. They didn't stipulate an hourly department. As far as I'm aware.
No.
Hmm.
There's an, there's an annual salary, so that's just the, whether it's working or not.
That's what I'm getting at. Every week, the check equals this much, but there was no expectation set of, the office will be open. This many hours, you know what I'm trying to say?
That's true.
Um, but, um.
But you can't require that.
The voters did, but she presented, um. She presented that, I mean, it's. And now her budget, um. Somewhere, um, this is what she presented.
Yeah, it's the, the treasurer and, yeah.
Here's a question, would it be worth, on town meeting day, asking the voters to stipulate hours a week? On town meeting day? For the salary in terms of that? Like the town clerk, she'll work forty hours a week on town meeting day, since the voters approved the salary, add that in with it?
Well, now that they've approved the salary. Do we have to ask them every year for the rate of the salary, or is that?
Yeah.
Like, you know, they have to approve the salary.
Everybody, everybody presents their budget. And it says, um, the voters don't approve the salary, then the selector does, but it's. It's written, and you look at our town report, it's right in there. That the voters voted on our budget, that we put in that amount of salary. If we put in. Ten thousand next year, that if that's what we decided to put in there. The voters can either approve that, or they can amend the budget, forget it, whatever.
But like, this last year, we had a separate item, a separate article in the warrant. Do we have to do a separate article in the warrant every year now that she, now that our clerk is new?
No.
So.
No.
The only, uh.
Do we put any changes? Do we need to go?
Yeah, if we, if we wanted to do an hourly break, we would have to ask the.
Could we, could we? Would we go, could we ask them maybe? If it's not salary, just salary, maybe? If we're going that way.
Yeah, we can.
But then, if you, I mean, like, she can't work legally more than forty hours, be required, so salary. Whatever it is, pretty much assumes forty unless you. You know, and.
We could say that, you know. We're only gonna find you to work, you know, you can be open whenever you want, but we're only gonna, your hours, or we're only gonna. Find you to work twenty-five hours a week, that's what we think of. We're in charge of the money, we're she's.
Well.
But once the voters have approved it, so it's no voting back.
Yeah. Uh, but, more, more to the point, how can we accurately budget? And accurately, uh, assign a value to that, that salary line item or hour of the line item, if we don't know how much time the job takes? That would be the argument, that would be my primary argument for, everybody fills out a time card, because how can we responsibly budget? If we don't have that data, if we don't have that information, we're probably at risk of not complying with our sick time policy. Statement of the sick time, sick time policy, and. You know, how can we accurately budget for the future? Because just because this, just because Belinda is happy. With the setup that she has, at the rate that she has, doesn't mean that when we, the town is, I mean, I don't want to be morbid here. But the town is gonna outlive all of us, so when somebody is sitting on, at one of these tables, or filling the tables. Has to find a new clerk, how do they have the data to know what they're asking for?
There's nothing in my mind that prohibits a salaried employee, whether they're elected or not, to fill this out. I mean, this is separate, it's the same salaried employees, it's not saying elected officials or anything, you know, just how you're paid. Um. There's also an option next year, if you want to, to pull. With, with the vote from the town, you can simply pull, uh, instead of forming a charter. You can say that we would like select board to, uh, like supervision over, this is no longer an elected position, it's an appointed position.
Which would bring the entire office up and forward, and be oversight of this board, or any board in its.
And that's just the vote, it doesn't require.
The question of timesheets, I'm, I'm agree with it, and I would happily discuss with anybody who doesn't think.
I mean, we gotta have some way of tracking that sick time for the state, and if they don't fill it out, we're in trouble. Comes just to that.
Well, my suggestion was to put it in, and, uh, you know, part of what we have to see. As they review our ordinances for legality, make sure they're right, before we. Adopt them, and then, um, we do have money in our. Select board budget every year for legal, you know, they'll charge us a small fee. And we have twenty-five hundred in there, for them just to review this.
Yeah.
Moving on, I know there's an entire problem set. Uh, moving on to page. Fourteen, and the first segment, basically, it says, any employee who wishes to report harassment. To file a complaint with the select board chair, and I added board vice chair, because they have the town administrator. We no longer have a town administrator. You can put whatever you want there, but, you know, we had to remove the town administrator.
You could just say select board member.
Yeah.
Because if either one of the top ones are on vacation, like this happened, you gotta report to somebody.
Well, and, and it opens the door too for. Yeah, I'm, sorry, I'm gonna look at you, but if somebody's got an issue with, with you.
Right.
And they think that you and I are too close, they don't wanna come to me with the issue, because I'm not gonna do anything about it. That opens the door to the other three heartbeats on this board, you know, I, I think that it should read.
Board members.
Board members, select board member, yeah.
I mean, you never know who's gonna be sick, you never know who's gonna be town.
Or vacation. We're gonna have issues with, yeah, yeah.
I, I don't wanna get into the issue part, because I have no problem saying what I feel. I just feel some people are gonna be here or not, and.
Yeah.
You know, restricted to that, and it's. It's just gonna let the situation fester.
Any one of us can bring up an agenda item, we, we each ask to have anything brought up.
Uh, the next item is on page seventeen. Halfway down, it's talking about, um, this is disciplinary actions, and it does not apply to, uh, apply it. Like, to the elected officials. Um, but halfway, like the third bullet point, it says. Um, that appropriate levels of discipline may be based on severity of employee conduct. This list is not exhausted, exhaustive, and so the third. This list is not exhausted, exhausted, and so the third point in this list is being intent to duty, including sleeping on the job. And then I added, and engaging with entertainment or social media while at work. Seventeen. I don't know if it's necessary now, we can chop it up above, but it just shows that disciplinary action can follow if it applies to.
Yeah, I, I like it, I wonder if it's a little bit. Specific.
Almost there. And it's pretty much the, um, uh, I made edits to the, uh. The independently elected officer, because I've had the literacy all over, so I just edited that out. And, oh, the final thing is, uh, the one on page twenty three. It's the work that health and pension benefits. Um. Do we wish, so it goes down, it says the town needs contributions to town, to the health savings account. For first covered persons. And the covered person has a required minimum annual contribution, do we want to put those contribution amounts in there, do we want to be specific? Because they're not listed anywhere, I know that they're, you know, the twenty two fifty for individuals and forty five hundred for families of two or more. But do we want to have that included?
I will be clear, you didn't know until I told you.
Okay.
I mean, you wouldn't have known reason to know.
And then it's, uh, we should probably specify that they, they are to be paid quarterly at the end of the early quarter and prorated to accommodate. The date of commencement of employment.
I think it's being paid at the beginning is this one, HSA.
Nope, she's not doing it for, like, she's putting it in.
Quarterly, but in the beginning before and not the end.
Oh, she told me at the end, but.
I can bear that.
I'll bear that. And then again with, um. And then just on the very last page. Qualified employees and other specifically eligible persons may decline healthcare insurance benefits if they can prove that they, I added, if they can prove that they're covered by another policy. Because that's, that's boilerplate. Employees and other specifically eligible people who decline take off insurance, insurance benefits shall receive twelve hundred dollars a year. Compensation, and then I added, to be paid quarterly at the end of the early quarter and prorated to accommodate, um, the commencement of employment. Just to be specific. Because when I first started, this confused the crap up. So, there's your, there's your, um, your, your objective on it. And then I did make a lot of changes too, I included a link suggestion that the CrossFit Shield Silver Plan, what they were in twenty twenty premiums. And then, the way it was written prior, it was just a redundant statement, did not differentiate how to calculate that, it just said. Pretty much. That. The people who are hired and grandfathered in, and it still states this in the, in the, um. Labor Union, of the same things new hires, I mean, it didn't, it just restated. Very vague, so, um, I rewrote that so that you're very clear. For the, um, you know, employees prior. Um. Prior, prior to February second of twenty twenty two, how do we calculate their health insurance moving forward versus the new hires? And in fact, the answer was being calculated at this other way, if. She was being calculated at the previous, previous rate. So Lynn and I went over this and she said it's, it's clear to her now, so. You guys, one, I will put in, this will say, it's no, you're, it's going to be coming, but the other one we have from the end. It makes sense, the HSA, if I can be better. If you pay for yours. You pay for your CrossFit Shield.
So, you know, it's like, but. You wanted it at the beginning or you don't want it at the?
I wanted it at the beginning, it makes sense to have it at the beginning.
So, units should be made to, into their agents, say, at the beginning of each ordinance, my understanding that is happening now. If you look at, at some of these things, January first, it's going in. Um, but you can double check, I think that's the way it's always been done.
Um, I may have just misunderstood, so. I like that. Okay. I think that's it.
Well, let's check on the things and then take the next thing.
So. Oh, yeah, just, you guys still through the driveway? What, the driveway?
Driveway culvert areas.
Now, it's too late, I'm going to. Kind of table that.
If you want to table that, there's only one thing I'd like to have in the next session. See how there's not enough parking? For the rail tunnel as of lately? Is it possible to have the road crew brush hog? And cut down any trees from the banks of the library to the gravel driveway to the sugar area? And at least add another five or six lots, parking areas, lots. We have a conflict.
Where? We can't, we can't, we can't cut any trees on the Westover property.
Yeah, I thought that was Mark's Brownfield out there.
And Brownfield was in the middle of the road. In the middle of the road was on the KRS, where the train was.
Okay.
And it was basically almost in the middle of the road, a little bit to the parking area side, but. Down here in front of the water.
Picture, okay.
Um, Westovers, you're not allowed to cut any trees. That's why I was asking tonight about that right of way, to get up to the spring, whose land was it, because I'm not sure. Um, when they go in to demolish homes, they're not allowed to cut any trees. Unless it's right there around the house.
But the easement for water rights exist, and I think that's going to supersede. Long as the water is allowed to continue to exist there.
Well, their spring is different than ours. They're like two hundred feet. Westovers is two hundred feet of those waters. But you need the same thing to get there, um. And the easement doesn't really spell it out, the dimensions or anything.
Yeah. Yeah, like with mine, it just gives you the right to create a trench from there to where you need it. At the time, it was supposed to, it was water, right?
Yeah, I looked into it because I was really nervous when the Westovers was being stole and. It's like, hey, our spring's on that property, what rights do we have?
I will send out the, my thoughts on the, um, roads, uh, the review of the roads and bridges coordinates, I'll send it out in an email. I just feel like we're paying for, uh, private driveway, for driveway culverts and it's. In our permit, the permit states one thing, the order states another, um. I'll just send it all out, it's interesting.
One piece of information that, uh, if you can put your hands on it easily for the next meeting. I'd like to know how many times. The town has flipped the bill for replacement of, how many instances has this been used? Like. I think, I think three driveway culverts that have been replaced at, at our cost. I'm just curious what that total is in the last, like, three months. I mean, and, and all my final addresses, I'm just curious.
This year. Upward, but we, we have them purchased.
Yeah.
They're on to.
Listen, I feel like the whole.
Do you want to have the cars culverts purchasing or cars actually doing?
Just us doing the work.
Just not purchasing, I'm going to break it up, because culverts are expensive.
Yeah.
Do you think it's happening more now because of the flooding?
Oh.
It's too, but because I don't recall it happening all that much in the past, but.
The, the way, the way I remember things and the people that I have spoken to, the way that it was done in years past. Sand Hill is a prime example, when I bought the land, we had a grant aid, uh, and they resurfaced Sand Hill and they streamlined the ditches. The culverts that needed to be repaired as a part of that ditching, the town bought, the town did the work. They replaced O'Brien's, they replaced, I can't remember that one thing, but replaced hers. Uh. That's what I'm saying, doesn't matter, um. So as a part of routine maintenance, culverts were being replaced, what I have seen happening now. Is people are calling, I mean, damaged driveway culverts and are saying, but your policy says.
You can just get out and fix things, it's a right of way or whatever.
Right.
We'd also like, maybe it's been mentioned that we should encourage people in putting in permits to go outside of the right of way, if it's the culverts.
Yeah, if it can be done.
Yeah. Okay, call four towns, talk to the forty grand, run through Portland, so. Just to see how it is going, and I'll send that information, information as well.
I'm going to put the culvert outside of the right of way, if they're ditching the right of way, hopefully they're across.
I want to tell you.
An example of it, um, Elmore Pond Road, um. Leaving here and you go get onto the flats. I wish I knew people's names, I wish I knew the addresses, but there's that yellow house that's, I don't know, maybe seventy feet off the road in the ditch. It's that's the road there. Their driveway comes here. And the ditch kind of naturally goes to the low spot, crosses through their culvert outside of our right of way, and then comes back into our ditch. They had the topography to allow for not putting the culvert right here at the intersection. Which is an issue that we're having on a few other driveways further down, uh, like where, uh, Whitman Lane is. Where the slopes pitch down into the road, the culverts are right at the edge of the right of way, so between the runoff, you're catching from the road. Plus the slope into the ditches, all of this excess water pools at the entrance to the driveway. Comes down around and washes the roadside out into the culverts, plugs those culverts up, then plugs the cross culverts up. And then we get phone calls about, about fong broke.
So, um. You know, that leads us, I know, that leads us back to. Are these, uh, permit driveway permits being checked at the end, because they have to prove until they're putting. And then they're signed off that they've been putting correctly, so, I mean, are we checking to make sure?
Someone goes up there and checks, it spun up there yesterday, it's morning.
Because Whitman, that Whitman Road is fairly new, it's. Yep, seven years with the most, I mean.
But that wouldn't have been Dylan, so.
But, yeah, that's what I'm just saying, are we really being firm with this?
Dylan's obviously checks everything.
Making sure that, you know, the runoff, come about and everything is right.
And what I'm doing now is if it looks like, I'll send you a photo and, and if. Before we even send Dylan up there and if it looks like it's a driveway issue, I'll just say, this looks like a, I'm going to. You know, I'm going to send this to the road foreman, but it looks like a driveway issue, and it's like, it might get, and have this redesigned. So, and then Dylan will confirm it, I don't actually, I think, but I just want to make sure before we start spending a lot of energy. Let me do it.
Yeah, I didn't, I didn't bring it over here, I don't know what's up.
So what do you want us to do for homework and make sure that this, you know, we can work on this pretty smoothly next term?
Okay, then I'll send this stuff out and then, we have it, but I'll send it out again, I'll have my notes from the four towns. There are no towns that do the, the drivers, that maintain them regularly, they will if they're doing a project. And I'll see you later. So you're asking us to, um. To amend the ordinance.
The ordinance and the, uh, permit.
The permit reads accurately, it's the ordinance that starts out. You'll see why I highlighted, the permit actually says that it's up to the.
The permit claims that the homeowners can purchase culverts from us at cost, or at highway fare, at town cost.
The landlord will bear the cost of the culvert, uh, and is so approved by the select board. Culverts will be maintained by the town in emergency situations only, or so approved by the select board.
So we don't really do this, the process of, for now, not that it's the right process, it's we, you know. Just tell them to go to Johnson, only garden, and they can buy it if the town's great. You don't have any, money doesn't flow in and out.
It gets built us sometimes and then we have to call, I mean, that gets a little confusing.
John shouldn't be built, yeah, money shouldn't be flowing into our.
No, no, um, but Johnson gets a little, they don't really like to do, they want us to purchase their.
I'm sure.
We can give it.
Because they, because, because they probably are getting a tax breach.
Yes.
And they will be in trouble.
Yeah, you need a tax number.
Yeah.
Without the tax number, they're not going to do it.
I would need to, in the past, but with the last two, Brady and Sam, Sam big. And by some points, I know they were failing, it's a great.
It'd almost be advisable that you're telling them to go there too, at least get the tax number, and have it approved before they go.
Yeah, I don't know how much they save.
What is it?
I think we, the biggest bit is a problem in tax, I don't know that we get that fee discount. You get discounts when you purchase involved, like at Johnson over eighty five hundred, that's why I've been going to our, our store a little bit more at the end there. The smaller, or it's an angel there for the same price, so. Take the motion that. We're waiting for Richard, Richard, you're up.
Do you time the ceiling?
From the city, may I? I take a three D motion that we adjourn this meeting. And whatever the whole time it is, throw this in my floor. I second. Oh, come on, all in favor?